At the March twenty ninth city council meeting, Tourism Barry presented an expansion plan for Sadlin Arena, which is only twenty eight years old and relatively modern according to the assessment. The arena is a primary home to the Barry Colts of the Ontario Hockey League and has a seating capacity of forty two hundred seats. There were six options proposed, ranging in cost from twelve million to forty million dollars. Barry Tourism's preferred option would add twelve hundred more seats, thirteen hundred square meters of new lobby and food court space, and other amenities. Tourism Barry has argued that the expansion will yield economic benefits far greater than the original investment. At the meeting, council also passed a motion to seek external legal counsel regarding potential issues associated with the Love Barry sign. While in office, former Wartan councillor Mike McCann superheaded a project to privately raise at least three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. However, there have been demands for greater transparency surrounding the funding. McCann subsequently ran for mayor and lost to current mayor Alex Nuttall. Councillor Brian Hamilton, who introduced the motion, said it is a forward-looking motion to ensure future transparency and liability. It is estimated that hiring an external lawyer for the city will cost around ten thousand dollars. During the meeting, the council also presented the twenty twenty two Heritage Barry Awards.
We're now going to proceed with the second presentation for this evening by Tourism Barry regarding the Sadlin Arena Expansion Report. So if I could ask you to come forward to the microphone and provide the presentation.
Half of the board of directors, I'm pleased to present the Sadlin Arena Expansion Review Report to Mayor and Council today. In twenty twenty two, Sierra Planning and Management was hired to complete a review and opportunity assessment of a proposed expansion to the city-owned Sadlin Arena, and how it could serve new opportunities to the city to grow its sporting events and activities at the arena. I would like to introduce John Hack, Director of Sierra Planning and Management, and Richard Dabrous, Principal Architect with WGD Architects, Inc., that will be presenting the highlights of the report today.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Worship and members of council, city staff, and members of the public. I understand we have ten minutes, so we will be just going through this presentation for you. And of course, there is a larger, much larger, report that goes along with it. We'll be happy to take some questions as we proceed. And my colleague, Richard Dabrous, from WGD, is in the gallery, and we can both take questions. Just before I do get into the presentation slides, just a note of some thanks. This piece of work has taken a while to complete, and we've had the very capable assistance, obviously, of Tourism Barry through Kathleen's office, but also city staff have made themselves available and provided great review, and also access to the facility, the facility management there. And then lastly, Horsepower Entertainment were good enough to meet with us and give us the insight to their business dealings over the years there. So all in all, we're able to get full compliance, I can put it that way, with what we were trying to do, and the result is the plan before you. So the project purpose, pretty much laid out as you see it, was to review future expansion opportunities for the arena, and do so in a way which develops some conceptual options and capital costs and operating implications, very much geared to the facility as part of the city's sport tourism mandate, which it has been and continues to be, and then as part of that, responding to proposed plans that were put forward by the Horsepower Entertainment and their architects at the beginning of the process. And so we've commented on elements of that as well. So as I said, the timeline, we started round about this time last year with our basic analysis, ran through the summer, took a bit of a hiatus because of the council election process and other priorities for the city, and then resumed as the election approached, and then the other side of the election with review, and so have provided the reporting for you now. So straight to conclusions, just to save you reading a number of chapters, but all of this is established in there. You know, there's always a question in any arena building that does meet community needs, is it a community building, is it a commercial building? And this is a, you know, four thousand-plus-seat sport and entertainment center, MUSEC, as we say, and as the acronym. And it is, and through our analysis, it very much is, its primary mandate is that of commercial events, including the hockey franchise and other things to go in there. Doesn't mean that you winnow out or you take away from the community use, but there needs to be some clarity, and I think there is, as to whether or not this is a location for further investment in community facilities such as additions and so on. So you'll see that go through the report. At twenty seven years old, twenty eight, I guess now, this in nineteen ninety five, it was commissioned, it's still relatively modern for a sport and entertainment building. These buildings are a lot more muscular, if I can put it that way, than your average community rink. And so you see around the province ones which are quite a bit older. It suffers from not having the most modern elements that you see, but it's still a very good building, and one that, as a sunk investment, does require some further investment. And we see that around the province buildings get to thirty, forty years old. It's time to put some new infrastructure in place to maintain its capacity to operate as the events market unfolds. It is, you know, on review, in relative terms, successful in its current program of events. There's nothing untoward. Can it do better? You know, I'm sure it can, and that's the goal of any investment exercise, to demonstrate how there are more opportunities to bring bigger events and a few more of them, and also maintain what is a fairly good deficit in terms of, you know, these buildings all create net operating deficit. There's nothing in the mechanics of that that suggests that the building is underperforming, but obviously, if investment is made, you want to see some return on investment, which would mean some diminution of that deficit if you can. Some issues around ongoing governance of the facility, do you have a third-party manager? Does the city continue to manage it? And I think we've come down on the side of doing it as simply as possible, which means maintaining relationships of importance, and that is with the team as well. But I should say, you know, if the city were to move in the direction of making any significant investment, I think that triggers a discussion about what the new licensing agreement with the team would look like, and then obviously, governance as well. So the back half of the report, we've identified a number of different options, because all of them speak to needs that we've identified, and we recognize that, you know, doing all of this is going to be very expensive, and without speculating what a new venue is, you know, five that you see around the country, five thousand-seat venues, I think Moncton is one of the last ones that was built, that was about seven or eight thousand, that's about a hundred million dollars to build that facility. So modularity of options is important. So we've identified six of them, and my colleague, Richard, was instrumental in developing this, having walked through the building and looking at the as-built drawings. The first one, so on the eastern side of the building, the eastern entrance there, where the accessible seats are and so forth, it's quite tight. There's an opportunity to improve that, and an opportunity on the upper level to add seats. So one of the things that we came to, and it wasn't suggested to us by the team or anyone, was can you create more seats? At forty two hundred seats, there is a potential to do more. Option two does the same, but on the western side of the building, where the restaurant currently is. Option three is a new build addition, fairly modest in scale, to meet the needs of the team and create new spaces for food and beverage and programming, and really modernize the facility. Option four is sort of going for broke, no pun intended, it's the most expensive option. It adds large multi-use capacity for, you can call it a conference space, we call it a general multi-use space that would be focused on commercial events and associated events on the ice floor or the flat floor during the summer, but would also be there for community use as well. Option five gets into a hybrid, where you're adding seats, but then modernizing the building as you have in option three. And if I haven't lost you with all these options, option six is the one that we've come down and said this probably is the option that makes the most sense. So this table is one where, you know, the current number of seats is around forty two hundred. So on that basis, you would say, although it meets the needs generally of events, it's not going to target the larger national events that will go to facilities that have five or six thousand seats in them, fixed seats, that is. So you can see the options there in terms of adding seats, and if you went to option six, you could push up to, you know, fifty four hundred seats. So that would be a very competitive arrangement going forward to search for large national-type events. In terms of the additions, the square meters are just provided there, the real point there is there is new space developed in some options, and then there's renovation that goes along with it. We've identified where the team's facilities are improved. If you read the report, I think we certainly agree that the team is, you know, is a primary stakeholder at the center, generating revenues to the city, economic impacts and so forth. And so their needs do need to be met, and there are ways, different ways to do it, and I think we've done it in combination with seats and also with team facilities. And the options three onwards, where we're starting to provide the necessary additional space, but it's not just for the team, there are upper floors which improve opportunities for a new lobby, food court, and so forth in the larger options. And then the multi-purpose facilities, as we call it, the sort of conference space is only one option, option four. In terms of the costs, this is where the sort of staircase of costs, but the way we've broken it down is, you know, as of, these costs are really as of the first quarter twenty twenty three. There's building hard costs, we've added all the necessary soft costs that need to be added to that to come up with the total for the building. We've added an allocation for site development, even though, you know, we have not done detail work to, technical or otherwise, on the site. And then there's design and construction contingency. So when you haven't done that kind of work in detail, when you haven't done detailed design, you need to place a fairly substantial contingency on there. So total costs then jump to total project costs in each of those options. Option one involves some additional new space to ease that tight circulation, plus the seating, twelve point three million. Option two renovates the food and beverage restaurant area, puts in seating, has a new mix of food and beverage experience, which is more in keeping with what we see around North America generally. And then option three is one way of adding a new lobby space on the north side, a new entrance, or really, that would one be an option where you really have a decidedly different building, if you were to go down that track. And certainly, a big improvement comes in, you know, eighteen million. Option four is the one where we do everything, and it's a very large level of new investment, about seventy thousand square feet of new on multiple levels. And there's no doubt it would be spectacular if it were built, but it does come in at forty three million dollars. Option five, just to recall, is really option three and option two together, and comes in around twenty eight million. And then option six is one that we were saying has the most benefit, it maximizes the seat count, and it adds a modernization to the facility overall, which is going to, I think, pay dividends. So that's where we are. In terms of the site plans, I'm not going to go through in any detail, but just to finish off, on the upper level of the east, there's an expansion of seats, and then there is, as you can see, those lines there, a new roof and a new canopy, there's a new building underneath there, just to improve that element of the building. The west expansion, again, adding more seats where, you know, the restaurant and some office spaces, and improving the experience below. The option three, this is at the ice level, so there is a concourse level above it, which we'll show on option five. This meets the needs of the team in full, and then when I get to option, I'm going to jump to option five quickly, that's the upper floor, new food court, new lobby and program space, new entrance, and plaza. I'll just go, and that's, and then option six, this provides seating at both ends, plus the building at the top, and that is it. So hopefully, I've come in just around ten minutes, and I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We're going to take questions from members of council. I have councillor Harvey first, are there any other members of council who have questions? Councillor Kangal, second, councillor Corser, third, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall, and thank you for your presentation. Obviously, it kind of confirms why I brought this forward a few years ago, and I do thank you for your robust report, because I'll be quite honest with you, it actually covered way more than I ever anticipated, right down to the operation of buildings like this. And obviously, there was some discussion in comparing it to other OHL buildings when it comes to the management of it. And I know just recently, even with the IHF Women's World Hockey Championships, and two of the teams coming here to Barry to practice leading up to the event in Brampton, we couldn't house them both at the Sadlin, because there just wasn't enough locker room space to be able to keep their equipment in a locker room for the seven to ten days that they're required to be here. So it just kind of reiterated some of the issues that we have when it comes to the event space for the athletes. Just a few questions of clarification. When it comes to option three and six, where you're adding that new entrance on the north side of the building, is there any reason why that didn't continue the whole length of the building to add and maximize the square footage available, and maybe pivoted that entrance from the parking lot the way option four was situated?
Through you, Your Worship, thanks, thank you for the question. It may be helpful, I'm not sure whether we can put the presentation back up, and I would just ask, Richard, do you want to just come down and address the council's question? Thanks. I'll just scroll back if I can.
There's a large grade change between east and the west of the building. So the new concession area on that concourse level sort of stops where you'd have loading docks and truck marshalling areas. And then on the very east side, it anticipates there being a bit of a plaza, maybe a large screen monitor outside on the existing building walls, so it becomes a bit of a gathering place. So it really is a design decision. It could be stretched, pulled in different ways.
Okay, great, thanks, yeah, because I know there was some issues that were identified in the one early on meeting that I attended, where it's identified that there's a bit of a water bed below that area, too, that leads out to a creek.
There is a conservation zone where that kind of culvert is, it's not part of the conservation zone, as far as we can tell from the city mapping, but that would have to be consideration going forward with any of these options, exactly where that zone is.
Great. And just a follow-up to that, when it comes to the entrance, because obviously, it seems like the preferred option, option six, is not your original design that you had come up with, and it was more using what the Colts had from their two thousand and fourteen Memorial Cup bid. When it comes to the third story that I know they had in their plans, was that piece of it ever explored through your process of looking at what to do here? Because from what I can see, it looks like what's being proposed is a two-story addition on that parking lot side, opposed to possibly going to that third level.
It really comes down to costs, and then what is your benefit for doing this? Having a large press center, how often will it be used? Yes, maybe it's more attractive, Memorial Cup, but you have to weigh the cost-benefit analysis, so that's why we didn't really include for it.
Yeah, just to add to that, if I may, so, you know, adding that large multi-purpose flex space, you know, could be a black box theater one evening, it could be a banquet hall, it could be a conference space, and it could, you know, it's going to have relatively low utilization through most of the year. It could certainly be a community facility as well, but, you know, we did take the time to sort of understand the city's general approach to community recreation facilities, and so while they're long-term, there are those, there are two, as I understand, two longer-term multi-use rec centers potentially planned for the south end. So it comes down to, again, it's a choice of ours, to recognize that this building needs to maintain a kind of more of a commercial focus. So you have to make some difficult choices. So option four is one that I think would look great, it may not be cost feasible at this point.
Great. And another follow-up, when it comes to the addition on the east side, where it was identified, that's where our current handicap viewing area is, I assume by looking at the drawings that those additional seats would then eliminate that handicap area, and if it does, is there another area within the facility that that type of use could be had?
It doesn't eliminate, the concourse still is the concourse, goes all the way around, so that seating's not eliminated. All we're doing is pushing out one structural bay, allowing us to complete the rake of the seats of the bowl, because right now it's truncated, but if you add an extra structural bay, you can finish off the bowl. So the top of the bowl is constant, well, all the way around if you have the east and west expansion. There would be a requirement to move the dehumanification and chillers out, but I understand they're due for replacement or close to it regardless.
Okay. And in option five, your hybrid version, is there a reason why it chose the west side opposed to the east side when it comes to a hybrid version?
Well, thinking there was, the seats are more valuable on the west side for concerts. That's why we steer away from option one, option?
Yeah, yeah. So just so, and we can take care of trying to right-size the amount of food and beverage. There's a restaurant and so forth on that western end, and that will be part of a renovation. On the northern end, it's putting in the new kind of experience that you see around North America. What's happening at the Rogers Center now, for example, the big three hundred million dollar renovation, that's a lot of that kind of modernization of food and beverage, so you have concessions, you know, in a more, in a better ambience, that's what we're trying to do here. So if this were an option that's under consideration, I think you'd definitely stick to the western end.
Great. And then my last question, it wasn't in the presentation, but it's in the report. One thing that was identified as being a bit of an issue is the entrance way for trucks and stuff to be able to get onto the floor surface for events and stuff, and to do at the height. And I know when I was there, it was quite evident that there was a lot of piping in that area that obviously isn't an issue for a Zamboni going under there, but you put a box truck under there, it could be, it could be an issue. It doesn't really get into specifics as to how you would rectify that, other than it's identified that it's something that should be looked at. Would it be as simple as just digging it out deeper, or what would you recommend?
No, the rink level has to stay where it is, and the loading area is what it is, more or less, lowering that's probably impractical. As far as reworking the actual vomitory to make it larger, that's really a subject of detailed design. Yes, you can do that. By increasing the vomitory, so you can get cube trucks up there, that makes it more attractive for trade shows, where exhibitors like to drive right on the floor, drop off, and then they leave, and somebody comes in behind them. But there's another shortfall in the current design for the arena, in that for concerts, it's difficult to load and unload semi-trailers. So there's still a loading dock issue that would need to be addressed, could be, should be addressed. And again, racking for concert lights would also ideally be addressed when we get into detailed design.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, councillor Harvey, and I'm going to go to councillor Kangal.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nuttall, thank you for the presentation. Some of my, most of my questions were answered through that. So I would have, I'd be interested to hear about, while I know, as I was reading it, of course, the Colts being a key stakeholder in that, some of the different design options that were identified, while the conference space, I think, was not recommended overall. I didn't know if you had heard from staff, or if it's a redirection of the question to staff at this time, if there's an opinion about anything that we should keep in mind, so around city use with our other stakeholders. So knowing Mariposa Skate, knowing that we tried to maximize the use of that facility around the Colts' schedule, we have been trying to bid on major events. So overall, is there a primary one in which we would see, you know, best opportunity to maximize the investment we could maybe make on the option to also meet other stakeholder needs versus knowing we've got other recreation centers in our capital future plan? Has there been a conversation about balancing investment in this space versus investment when we can do net new builds in other facilities?
Through you, Your Worship.
For the presenter, and then if you wanted to refer to staff or anything that you can't speak to, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of our own assessment, we certainly talked to the city about directions for community planning. The reality of these buildings, and this is where unfortunately, half-measures are going to satisfy everyone, is that, and I should just say, there are certainly improvements to the organization of events that would improve the capacity, but the reality is, and you see it around the country, is that the principal event center that hosts, you know, the major hockey franchise is going to have almost a frictional level of underuse of its ice prime time, because the groups that need absolute certainty of access can't get it. Groups like Mariposa and others that there are really important constituents, you'd still try and maintain them, and so you're trying to this sort of have it both ways in some regard. You want more events, you want to put more seats in, you need this to win, help win bids, but you do need to maintain access to those that need it, and that is a management exercise, it's a culture of use exercise. Do you have ice, is the facility open longer, open earlier? So it's no straight answer to it, but we're certainly aware of the need to have a broader city benefit for anything that you do here. So for that reason, we weren't going to replicate what the team was looking for, for example, in its entirety. Hopefully, that helps.
It does, thank you. And now, if I may, I'll redirect a question to staff.
Before you ask a question, staff, I'd ask that we hold that, because I believe there's going to be a report that comes back, and I wouldn't want to preempt the report.
And that really was my question, was just the next steps around, are staff bringing forward a report around an opinion or a review of this?
Thank CEO Corser.
Thank you, Mayor, excuse me, thank you, Mayor Nuttall, through you to councillor Kangal. I think I would point out two things. Typically, staff are provided with the finalized report prior to going to council. That didn't happen in this case, so staff are still reviewing this report, as council is. Secondly, at this point, staff have no direction to review or report back, so if that's council's desire, that should be the direction of council.
Thank you. And so I am interested around that direction happening at some point, but I'll look to you, Mayor Nuttall, about how to frame that, or if that's a, if that would be considered a motion without notice, because we're at council, so maybe that's for a future conversation, we can take that away, but we'd like that conversation to continue.
Yeah, thank you so much, councillor Kangal. I think giving our public service the opportunity to go through it a little bit, but also concurrently, we can work with the clerk to but also concurrently, we can work with the clerk to, to come up with a timeline. Councilor Corser, you're good. Councilor Rittman.
I just, I have a couple of questions. The first one is around option number three, and if you could put it back up, that would be helpful. As I look at the drawing, it seems to me that this is an expansion at the lower level, at ice level. And is, is, is there a second story on top of this? Sorry, option number three. Yeah, there it is.
So what you just saw in this ice change, effectively up on the wall, option three, the difference between you, that all the design plans in the report, I love what you just explained.
Change to the north. So what you're looking at now, ice level takes advantage of that. Right now, the arena, there's stairs that go down. Well, we're saying that's where the, the team facilities could be. It's more level with the loading facilities to the east, and it just works. Then as you go up to the concourse level, it remains unchanged. All we're doing, previous slide, we're adding structural bays that allows for new concessions, food service to happen largely where the restaurant is right now, but the concourse becomes continuous. And with the new box to the north, it has, as John said, a large number of concession, food service, entertainment, Hall of Fame options that could happen in it. Most of these options all have a better entrance, well, they do, they have definitely a better entrance situation. Right now, all the parking is to the north, and the entrance on the west, which picks up most of the parking, is terribly tight. This option, again, creates a little plaza where people can come from the park into the north and sort of gather before they go into the main lobby. Does this add to your question?
Yes, it, it does, I think, and I, I do appreciate your answer. I was just, I was just trying to figure out if there is such a thing as an option three with a second story on it, without the other work that was being shown on option five. And just wondering if that is a 3A that might work.
It is a possibility, absolutely. And it would be at the top of the rake of the seats, it's additional square footage, but absolutely it could be done, and an elevator.
If I could just add, so if you, the option six, just to bring it back to that, which is sort of identified as if you're asking the consultants what, what we would, we would recommend, money aside, we, you know, that one would be impressive. If you were to do a fly-through of this building, so you can do an animation, you do, you do a fly-through, you know, you would, you would see a 360-seating bowl and, and this, this area space that opens up to the north that is highly programmable. I think with the right management approach, you can really make hay with that, with that space, so. As Richard said, anything is possible, which is why we've kind of treated it as a, as a game of Lego in some regard to, to put these options together.
Supplementary, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you that if you put enough money to it, you can accomplish anything. And I think that's the question that some of us are going to wrestle with. And I was wondering, have you done a, a business case for any of the scenarios to indicate to us, you know, the, sort of the, the operational cost of it over time, or, or any of those kind of things?
Yeah, and it's, that's a big, that's a big, that's a big thing. We do it routinely in, in many detailed event center studies that we do. This one is slightly different. I think the next step, once you arrive at a preferred option, would be to look at, you have to look at everything. You have to look at the license agreement, because that is absolutely critical. You have to look at whether or not you're having a third-party manager, and by, by which I mean someone other than the city that would come in, and they have a, a very focused attention to bringing in concerts and events, which are going to add incremental revenue over and above the fees that they would charge. That's how you chip away at the, the deficit to bring, to bring it down. But a building like this, I think the deficit is around 500,000 to 600,000. That is not untoward. There, there are, we put one, one in the report, an example, the city of Kingston's, because of where it's located and how it was managed third-party from the outset, and its downtown venue has, but it's, it's a tight, tight building. You know, that generally has created some positive cash flow, but, you know, the vast majority across the country of this scale do not. So I think that, so the answer to your question is you'd have to defer to, to doing it in a serious way. I think we've said in the report, you know, we would expect you to have an incremental gain in the number of events. You would have, I think, with the seat count and this, if you were to do this kind of addition, it gives the team the impetus to, to do more and to improve their, their fan base, which is already pretty good if you look around the, the province. And, and you will get a few of those national events. We're very cautious about it. I mean, over a 10-year period, you might get, say, three or four. But if you look at the economic impacts of a Brier or a Scottish or something like that, it, it certainly helps make the case for this kind of investment. But the short answer is, you'd need to do that as a separate detailed exercise to be able to have the kind of discussion that I think is going to satisfy anyone that looks at this, is what is the return that we're going to get?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Corser.
I know there was, I'm sorry, this was asked and answered already, just in the clarity, and I'm sure I'm probably coming in a little early on the planning process here, but when we toured the facility, I was a little concerned about the loading area and the incline of it and the safety issues surrounding that. Is this something that would be addressed in this plans currently?
I think in the report, we identified shortcomings in the loading area. And yes, it can be fixed, but it really is subject to detailed design, because really we're up at 20,000 a few years, so, so we haven't looked into that.
Forever learning. Thank you very much.
Councilor Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Just one other question that came to mind that I forgot to scribble down when I was thinking about questions a few days ago. And the reason for this question is because Hamilton's going through this right now. So Hamilton's going through a major renovation, and I've asked the OHL team to vacate for at least two years. And it now looks like they're losing their OHL team to Brantford because that municipality has agreed to build $135 million brand-new building. If any of this were to occur, now again, I'm no construction guy, but I suspect that that new entrance, the main grand entrance on the north side of the building, would probably not have any significant impacts on day-to-day stuff when it comes to the operation of the facility. However, once you start talking about blowing out the east and the west and adding seats, I would suspect the facility is shut down for a period of time. And if you were, what do you envision if we were to go for the full goose toe at option six? Would you do that in stages? One, one end, one season, another end, another season? And what would the rough timelines be so that way, hopefully, it doesn't have an impact on the operations of the typical hockey season out of this arena?
It's a pretty difficult construction climate out there right now. Delays are rampant. On the other hand, Kitchener did the expansion of the auditorium, they were able to do it between April and September, and it was a significant expansion. So it's not impossible. And, and staging it, yes, that takes pressure off. On the other hand, you pay more because you have to reassemble all the crews, so it's different issues.
Okay, great. Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were even going to be able to give me that answer, and I, I could tell by your, your look, I was hitting the nail on the head there with, when I was asking my question. Obviously, we've seen how fast the Rogers Center's gone through that major renovation before the ball season starts, but again, they're probably working 20 hours a day to be able to accomplish that too, so.
I'll, I'll just add, technical answers aside, is I think obviously you work in partnership with, with the ownership group, you know, the Cops Coliseum, I think that's a 17,000, it's an NHL building, so whether or not that was the, the right home for, for the, the Hamilton team, I'm not sure. But, you know, you, you have to go through a, a clear plan to make this work and get everyone involved, on board.
Great, thank you. Councilor Hamilton.
Sorry, I'm hesitant to ask too many questions or go too far down the rabbit hole with the design plans here before kind of hearing from staff and looking at the analysis and really prioritizing, you know, where our priorities are when it comes to capital investments. I know we have the Performing Arts Center in queue, we have two new community direct centers in queue. So just looking at the funding for this, and maybe I missed it, but is the funding expected to come all from city capital, or is there, were there grants or something that are available for this? Or is this a completely city-led capital investment that we would be adding in queue in addition to all the rest?
So I don't think that's necessarily, do you want to answer this?
To staff, perhaps.
Through you, your worship, and well, media staff. I think that's all part of business planning as well, in terms of the funding dynamics of how you piece it together. But that's just, that's just our business.
So Councilor Hamilton, I think that that's one of the many things that staff will have to look at in the staff report going forward. And I would expect that if there is a recommendation to proceed with a certain option, that there would be some sort of funding aligned to it.
Okay.
But we, I think we have to wait for...
Yes, I agree. I just wasn't sure if I missed the announcement of some grant or something through tourism, sports tourism that we were chasing after, and, and that's why we were receiving the presentation prior to going to staff. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
Single, oh, Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle, and thank you for the presentation. It's really interesting, the report is, is quite valuable as well. Just wondered, in, in your recommendations, you talk about a balanced approach is likely the best approach to operate in the facility. Does that balanced approach include the ability, and I see six as the preferred one, I understand why? Does that balanced approach mean that you could do six in different stages, such that the construction wouldn't require it all to be done? So we recognize that our building was built in, for 1995, the Colts moved over from Dunlop Arena, which was really out of date, which we do miss though, because it got torn down, it should have been a historical building, but nonetheless. Can it, can it be done such that you could do the upgrade of the facilities, such that our, our tenant, who is our primary tenant, the Colts, can be satisfied with their facilities being modernized and updated to meet current requirements? And you have that better top foyer, which is really tight. It's a very tight foyer in that, in that design as it currently sits, and they have the facilities for expanded events, such as the, the media centers, those kind of things. The Sports Hall of Fame is a nice addition. We have a lot of wonderful things in our Allenville Rec Center, but it's running out of wall space for the Sports Hall of Fame, quite frankly. So is that part of the balanced approach?
It certainly can be. I'll let Richard just speak to phasing.
Yeah, there was a question on phasing earlier. Absolutely can be phased. Everything to the north is separate of current arena operations really, except for the exit stairs. That could be worked out. But because it's separate, it could have its own timeline, so it could happen over a year. To do the addition on the east and the west, well, those are more sensitive to the operation of facilities. Can you tackle just one side and hopefully get it done between April and September? We'd have to work through some construction plans, but possibly it's a good chance. So yes, it could be phased and, and be gradual.
I don't know if I missed it as part of the, the report, but the, the challenge that we have in, in attracting larger events, is it, is it more the, if you were to weight the, the limitations, is it the seat capacity, or is it the ability to serve the event with proper, you know, amenities at the building? If you could, if you needed to do one, what one would need to happen first?
Through you, that's a, through you, your worship. That's a difficult question, because it really is multifaceted. There are elements of, you know, a licensing agreement that you'd probably want to rework a little bit, to open up the opportunity to have access to a timescale and a schedule that would work well with the promoters. You know, currently, the concessions, you know, are, are one issue, you want to be able to access to the concessions. A lot of times, promoters of events will come to the building, or any building, and will be looking for, working out ways to get additional revenue streams to make it worth their while and, and the, and the, those of the tours themselves. And it means if you can work that, you need to have full access to all the different levers that go into creating a business deal, as opposed to just putting the building up for rent. So, so that, that's one whole element. Whether or not you need 1,000 new seats to get a better bid or for large national events, I think you do need more seats generally, because there are, there are, despite what you read about specs for certain of these national events, it's the bigger, more modern facilities that get these events. But it's also about additional space, the ancillary space, the staging space, the ability to accommodate people away from the ice. So that's what we meant by balance as well. It really is not straightforward, and without sort of focusing again on the next stages here, I think there is a, to really understand from a, from a business point of view, which is the best way to start in terms of phasing, it's, it's, it's a, it's a war wall that you need to unravel a little bit before you can come to clear answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Harris. Sir, I have a few, few questions, and, and I have to maybe voice my mind a little bit here as, as part of it. For me, with regards to the Southland Arena, like, everything's on the table. I, I, if, if it was a different management model, great. If somebody wanted to purchase it and do a better job running it than us, great. I, I don't have a, I don't have a, a real inkling on, you know, any loyalty to, to any specific situation surrounding this facility, but I know it's good for the city to have. That, that, that's what I'm loyal to. The, what's being proposed here is a property improvement plan, right? It's something that's giving us lots of options, but we're, from what you're saying, we're too early to be able to get a detailed business plan, is to determine what the ramifications of any one of the options are. So we have a, we have a cost in, we don't necessarily have anything on the, on the far side of that. That's a, that's a dark sky, we have no idea. Is that, that's essentially?
Not, if, not, not precisely. In order to have, you know, a detailed assessment of what a pro forma would look like for operations, and what the team would get from a new license agreement versus what the city would get, the number of events, you do need to go through that detailed exercise. But, but we're certainly confident enough to know that if you were to put in the capital expense for some of this, there will be a dividend that gets paid over a period of time. But it is a, often an economic impact that goes beyond just a slight improvement to your operating deficit, for example. So that impact goes to the community as a whole. And that's often how a lot of these facilities are viewed, particularly the ones that are used as part of downtown regeneration, right? You see it around, is that, that it's a large-scale municipal capital investment that, that is going to pay dividends to the, the local economy. So those are the sorts of things you, you take into account when looking at the, at the business model. So just to answer your question as succinctly as I can, I think directionally, we know that option six is going to be, A, it's, it's not cheap, but there's going to be benefits over a period of time, 10, 15 years. Any one of these items may have some benefit. If you just did one side of the seating, for example, you're adding about 500, 600 seats, that probably by itself would not be enough. So that, that's sort of the approach that we would take.
Is there a, a detailed economic impact study that's been part of this in terms of, like, if you have a recommended option, if the recommended option was six, which I think has been bandied around a little bit, is there an economic impact study that accompanies it?
There can be. There are, there are, there are, what we've done in the report at the back end is identified scales of economic impact. So if you were to obtain a Memorial Cup or, or Brier, one of the large national events that lasts for, you know, a week or so, you, you can get a certain economic impact to the, to the region and to the city as a whole, and then if you have smaller events, we've laid that out. If we were to do a full, it's really part of a, of a detailed business plan where you would look at... would look at, essentially, without getting too technical, you would, you would roll forward, say, 10 years or 15 years, you would look at the capital cost that's going to, you're going to incur now, you would look at the operate, the net operating picture going forward, discount it so it's present value, and look at the economic impact from a reasonable and cautious approach to how many incremental events you get, roll that all into an assessment, and you have something called, what they call a benefit cost ratio, which is if it comes out positively, then it's a project that has a degree of public benefit to it. It may not satisfy the accounts of the municipality in the sense that some of those benefits accrue to, you know, the business community and tourism in general. But that's the way that I think you would help get your answers that you might need at the next, next stage.
If you were to start from scratch, you could, you know, eliminate any licensing agreements, any management agreements, any anything, what would you do?
If, in the same location as to where it is?
Yeah. I mean, you've got a report here, you know the thing inside and out, you know it 10 times better than me.
Yeah.
So what do you do if you eliminated absolutely everything, moving forward to make it the most efficient facility in terms of the operating of it, and, you know, the most efficient in terms of any capital improvements?
Yeah, well, I'd love to be able to say tabula rasa, and you can just start from scratch, but that's, you know, that's the very large, so if we just limit ourselves to what renovations and changes to management would we do, and all of that kind of stuff, there are limitations of the building, and Richard can speak to that. You know, we can't do a number of things that you see in the absolute most modern of facilities. But I think we would certainly, you know, we'd recognize the history of this, you know, that you've had one ownership group in, in that building running the, the hockey operations for, I think, the full 27 years. So there's an, there's an institutional knowledge, a level of competence across the board that you'd want to maintain. However, you know, I do think you would probably want to look at management models that help the city, as a city-owned asset, maximize the revenue potential from what is a very growing community. And so you can't add another 4,000 seats, you know, that you, to, to plan for the building in 20 years' time, but you can do that, those thousand seats, if you look at the growth of the community over time, they may become important to, to put extra people in, in the stands, game in, you know, every, every game that you have. So those are the kinds of things that we would, we would do.
So you would change the, the management model essentially is what you're saying?
No, I wouldn't say that off the bat. What we've done is we, you need to look at the benefits of the capital that you can put in, and then what is the best way to approach it from, from managing the building as a whole, recognizing you've got a franchise in there that has been intimately involved in that as well. So there's a crossover that you would have to do to achieve that. So we, we've stayed, you know, I don't think that's part of this current exercise. But what we often tell clients when looking at perhaps a new building is, you're not building for today, the whole analysis has to be 20 years out. Where do you want it to go so that you've got some benefit from it 20 years out? What should the scale of the seating be 20 years out? If you've got 3,000 people coming on a Friday night now, but you're in a very strong growth market, you know, don't plan for replacement of the same seat count or even a modest addition. Do something that is going to meet the needs in the future. And that's a really difficult question for a lot of decision-makers to have to grapple with, but that's the kind of analysis, Mr. Mayor, that I think you would, you would do.
Okay. One, there's two final questions. The, the second final would be on the, you mentioned something earlier on the operating side, you know, you said, okay, there's the, the capital improvements, but there's also the operating of the facility in terms of having more shows or rentals in place, which I think is probably something that we can start today. What is, so you've talked about an end, you know, that's, that's, that's a result of some work being done. What's the work to be done to do that?
To, to put more events in the building?
Yes.
Well, as, as I think you may be able to find, that through a focus on improving the schedule so that there is a clear ability for the city to bring events in and work with promoters, so there's a clarity of responsibilities, so that events and some of the good events can be, can be achieved, which maximize the revenues to the city, that, that's one thing. And, and then going forward, you know, and signaling that some level of investment is going to, to occur in this building, I think, again, we see, and I, I can't be precise about this, but you've got a building that's, that's 27 years old, 28 years old, it functions well, without investment going forward, with new buildings, whether there's one in Bradford or elsewhere, happening, you know, the relative market appeal, a draw, is going to rest on population growth, and what's happening at the top end of, of Toronto. And I think if you want to be in the driving seat, and what you've seen in some other communities, is there is a decision to look at this as an important building that's maybe approaching midlife, but it's certainly not an old building. And that's really the lens that we've taken, is that this building is worth the level of investment. I just think there is some planning that needs to be done to, to take what we've done, which is really, as Richard said, 10,000 feet up, looking at it, giving the, the bookends of what you could do, adding to it some market rationale, but I think the next thing is to get into the complexity of how you run the building and what the business model would be.
Final question, can you please provide, not tonight, but afterwards, at some point, please provide us, on slide forward indicates that we are essentially average on our deficit of the facility. If you could provide the, the information that shows that, that would be, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, yes. We generally try and keep that out of reports, because it's, it's, sometimes it's...
Politically hot.
Yeah. So, but we can certainly, I'll certainly make a note of that, and we can work through, through Kathleen's office to get that.
Thank you. And thank you so much for the presentation this evening, and I look forward to obviously working with our public service and our council on getting a report back and moving from there. So thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
We're now going to move on to committee reports. So Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be received. This is concerning 23-G-056, a report of the Affordability Committee dated March 2, 2023. 23-G-055, the report of the Finance and Responsible Governance, Governance Committee dated March 22, 2023. And 23-G-057, the report of the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee dated March 8, 2023. Are there any questions or comments regarding Section A of the General Committee Reports? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it's approved.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. As 23-G-058, secure electronic delivery method for confidential item. 23-G-059, the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for residential use, 109 Park Place Boulevard, Ward 8. 23-G-060, designating a heritage property for 125 to 127 Dunlop Street East, Ward 2. 061, the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 193, 197 Blake Street. 062, zoning bylaw amendment application, 17 Sophia Street, 357 and 11 McDonald Street, 58 and 60 Claperton Street. 063, 45 to 55 Cedar Point Drive easement, Dunlop Trunk Sewer relocation, Edgehill Drive to Hart Drive Project, EN1469, Ward 5. And 064, which is the Ontario Gas Tax Agreement. Are there any questions or comments with regards to Section B of the General Committee Report? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-065, zoning bylaw amendment, 680 Lockhart Road, Phase 2, Ward 9. Are there any comments or questions with regards to Section C of the General Committee Report?
Record a vote.
Record a vote is being requested by Councilor Morales and Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Marinettele. I will start with yourself.
Yes.
Councilor Rima.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Kangal.
Yes.
Councilor Corser.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilor Nagusi.
Yes.
Councilor Harvey.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Morales.
Yes.
And Councilor Hamilton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is a request for civic address change at 67 Owen Street, Ward 2. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Marinettele. I have a referral motion, motion 23G-066, to be referred to General Committee, April 26.
We have an amendment on the floor, moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by somebody.
Councilor Rima.
By Councilor Rima. That motion, 23-G-066, of Section D of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, concerning the request for civic address change, 67 Owen Street, to be referred to the General Committee meeting on April 26, 2023. Are there any comments or questions on the referral? Okay, all those in favor. The amendment carries on the main motion. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries as amended. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section E of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. 067, 2023 Patio Programming Open Air Dunlop Business in the Parks. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, it's approved. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section F of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section F of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 068 Yard Maintenance Bylaw 2011-107, review. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Record a vote, please.
Thank you, Marinettele. I will start with Councilor Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilor Morales.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Harvey.
Yes.
Councilor Nagusi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilor Corser.
Yes.
Councilor Kangal.
Yes.
Councilor Nixon.
Yes.
Councilor Rima.
Yes.
And Marinettele.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section G of General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Rima, that Section G of the General Committee Report dated March 22, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 069, the memorandum from circulation list dated March 22, 2023, concerning the 2022 Growth Report, as well as 070 memorandum from circulation list dated March 22, 2023, concerning the Downtown Urban Growth Centre. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it's approved. We are now complete with the committee reports, and we're going to get caught up with the notes, that's what we're going to do. I believe we're going to move on to direct motions, as there's no defer business. Councilor Hamilton.
I'd like to introduce a motion without notice concerning the Hart Berry financials. The motion states that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw, 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning the Hart Berry financials.
Thank you, Councilor Hamilton. If I could have the, somebody seconded that for you?
Councilor Rima.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilor Hamilton. It's moved by Councilor Hamilton, and...
He needs to sign it.
Thank you. It's moved by Councilor Hamilton and seconded by Councilor Rima, the motion without notice, Hart Berry financials, be introduced, pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw, 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning Hart Berry financials. Do not believe this is debatable, is it?
No, it's just...
Okay, so it requires two-thirds of council to support it, so all those in favor, it carries. Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you, and through you, I'd like to put the motion on the floor.
So you have to, if you could read out the motion?
Read out, read out the motion.
And moved by yourself, seconded by...
Excellent. Okay, moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Rima. The motion reads, Hart Berry financials, one, that the applicable city policies be amended to define a process for members of council to fundraise or enter into third-party fundraising partnerships to ensure further accountability and transparency, and second, that staff in the legal services department be requested to obtain external legal advice concerning the Hart Berry sign, including any potential implications and actions that could be undertaken as a result of the lack of financial information provided by the third party for the Hart Berry landmark sign and their correspondence received March 15, 2023, to be funded from the reinvestment reserve and reported back to the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee. And I can speak to that if you'd like.
It's moved by Councilor Hamilton and seconded by Councilor Rima, that with regards to Hart Berry financials, that the applicable city policies be amended to define a process for members of council to fundraise or enter into third-party fundraising partnerships to ensure further accountability and transparency. And two, that staff in the legal services department be requested to obtain external legal advice concerning the Hart Berry sign, including any potential implications and actions that could be undertaken as a result of the lack of information, financial information provided by the third party for the Hart Berry landmark sign and their correspondence received March 15, 2023, to be funded, and to be funded from the reinvestment reserve and report back to the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee. Councilor Hamilton, I think you indicated you'd like to speak to the motion.
Yes, thank you, and through you, Marinettele. I guess I want to state first of all that I was, have not been part of any previous dialogue or conversations with regards to or respect to the Hart Berry sign, either in my role as council or otherwise. So the notion of this motion really is with a forward-looking lens. I want to ensure that on a go-forward basis, that we as a council and as a city have a clear process in place that articulates the approach and process for entering third-party fundraising initiatives, and one that also clearly delineates roles, responsibilities, and accountabilities. So that speaks to the first part of the motion. The second part of the motion, again, not having been privy to any previous dialogue in relation to the Hart, Hart Berry sign, but receiving this recent correspondence stated on March 15, 2023, I do think it's prudent and in our efforts to ensure good governance... on March 15, 2023, I do think it's prudent, and in our efforts to ensure good governance, that we seek, or we request the legal services to seek external legal advice to understand any implications or actions that could be taken. And again, this really is an effort to ensure our own due diligence as a council.
Thank you, Counsel Hamilton. Are there any other comments or questions? Counsel Reema.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I seconded the motion for many of the reasons that Counsel Hamilton has just said. I think that as a city, we are obligated to be transparent, and I think we very much try to be that way. And this situation is anything but transparent. We were told that the cost of the sign was something in the range of $200,000. We were told that $375,000 were raised. There's a delta there that is unexplained, and I think it shouldn't be very hard to explain it. I mean, it's money in and it's money out, and it shouldn't be very difficult to give us that information. And I think in terms of transparency, we definitely need that. I think the second portion of the motion is very appropriate because I'm concerned that what liability attaches to the city as a result of this situation. I really don't want the city to be involved in any potential lawsuit. I'm not suggesting that there's going to be one, but I'm just worried that what happens if there is one. So I think we do need to know what the potential downside is in this situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reema. Are there any other comments or questions around the table? Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Unlike Counselor Hamilton not being involved, I was on council last term, and I will support this, but, you know, and it's not our job to give staff cover. We do have a policy, and if people had followed this, if the last council would have asked staff for a process, an opinion, on how to move forward, but we actually made this so ambiguous that it's created this. And I appreciate you bringing this forward, that it doesn't happen, and it'll tighten up the policy. But, you know, we moved forward because it got off the topic of the fundraising, and it became very divisive amongst council, and it got to the point where, and I said it then and I'll say it now, I'm so sick of the sign and talking about it. It's, you know, it may be one of the worst motions we've moved in the last term, and for those who watch there, there might be a few. So, but I just don't want, I don't want the public to pick this up and say, oh, wow, they don't have a policy. No, we did, and it was us, the returning members and other members, but I just, like I said, it's not my job to give staff cover, but fair is fair, that if we would have taken the time at that point, but I think because of the circumstances around it, it become what it become, and we're here today, and I do appreciate you doing that. So, thank you.
Counsel Kangal, yeah, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No, it's good, just for process, because we've done a couple of recorded votes, but for me, this one is important, so I would like to ask for a recorded vote.
Madam Clerk, we have a recorded vote requested. I think that there's other speakers and also, I think, an amendment coming. Okay, Counsel Harvey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Wholeheartedly, I do support the overall intent of this motion. I'm not going to quite go to the degree of saying that it's a bad sign, like, I mean, I think that realistically, there's obviously people that are against the sign, but overall, I think the general public really do appreciate the sign that's there and things like that. So like, I mean, this isn't all bad here. The only part that I struggle with in the motion is getting third-party opinion when we have a team of lawyers here at the city. So I would just direct this question to Ms. Peters, our Director of Legal Services. Do you believe that you would require to contract out third-party legal advice outside of your own office of expertise when it comes to this type of incident?
I think through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counsel Harvey, the, there are benefits to taking a matter that has been an internal matter for a year or two, and having a fresh set of eyes looking at it. I mean, we have done some internal analyses already, and I think that with another set of eyes, we could do it relatively efficiently. I've already made some inquiries, and I'm not here to present a number, but I think that for something that has this level of visibility, that there would be some, there would be some benefit to having a fresh set of eyes on it.
Thank you, and just a follow-up to that, because I don't believe the motion actually referred to a budgeted dollar amount when it was read out. What would you anticipate that this could cost? Like, are we talking 20-plus thousand, or what are we looking at here?
To some extent, it depends on the questions that are asked. I had foreseen laying out a specific chronology and being very succinct and directed with respect to what council is asking. I think it could be done for less than that amount, perhaps as much as half of that, but again, to the extent that the questions are limited and we have one go at it. I hesitate to give a number. I don't think it needs to be $20,000 if I phrase the problem correctly.
Great, thank you. And through you, Mayor Nettle, to the CAO, and I'm not sure if you're even going to be able to answer this question or not, but I haven't had anybody reach out to me complaining about what's going on, other than you read all this stuff in the media. Has any of these donors complained to the city about where their, where has their money gone?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counsel Harvey. Certainly, Counsel Harvey, not to my office. I'll look to Mr. Miller or Ms. James Reed, who certainly monitors our communications. I'm seeing shaking of heads, so I'm going to assume that that means we have not received any negative feedback nor complaints from the donors.
Okay, great, thanks. And I suspect that that was probably the case. I do personally know one of the donors, and I'll be quite honest with you, just this past week, they had quite a celebratory video that they posted when they were presented with some gift pack that was going out to the donors. Like, I mean, I know this is being portrayed as this big cloud around this, but I think the big cloud is probably not the cloud that people are hoping it is, and I know so far we've seen the documents come from the chartered accountants that reviewed whatever finances are behind the ground. It doesn't talk about dollar amounts, but obviously it clearly states that they didn't find any discrepancies using their normal processes that they would. But I will support this, but I just wanted to be kind of brought forward here that I'm not quite convinced that this is the cloud that it's being made out to be.
Counsel Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Just curious on the line of the legal connection or concern, is it maybe through you, Mayor Nettle, to Ms. Peters, when we initially went down this path and the motion was presented and passed, am I correct in my assumption that if that was being in process, if there were legal concerns at the time, that would have been noted to council? Is that fair?
Sorry, just before we go down that, Counsel Harris, I would just like to ask the clerk, would any solicitor-client privilege be potentially instituted here in terms of confidentiality, and if so, I'm going to ask you...
I can withdraw the question.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Hamilton.
I'd just like to introduce a slight amendment to the original motion, just to point of clarity and clarifying some language here, that paragraph one be amended to reflect that the process for members of council entering into third-party fundraising partnerships is on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Counsel Hamilton. It's moved by Counsel Hamilton and seconded by Counsel Thompson, that paragraph one be amended to reflect that the process for members of council entering into third-party fundraising partnerships is on behalf of the City of Barry. Are there any questions or comments with regards to this amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor. I believe the recorded vote was on the main motion. Thank you. So that motion, or that amendment, sorry, has carried, and we're now on the main motion as amended. We're now on the main motion as amended, of which there's been a recorded vote requested. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll proceed to the recorded vote. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'm going to start with Counsel Reema.
Yes.
Counsel Nixon.
Yes.
Counsel Kangal.
Yes.
Counsel Corser.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Counsel Nagusi.
Yes.
Counsel Harvey.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Morales.
Yes.
And Counsel Hamilton.
Yes.
And Mayor Nettle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're getting lots of exercise in recorded votes this evening. As we dealt with the presentations earlier on, we're now at the time for inquiries. Are there any questions or inquiries from members of council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements? Counsel Reema.
Very exciting, Mr. Mayor. April 23, Sunday, from 2 till 4, we're having a town hall meeting for Ward 1. Present will be myself and the mayor. All residents of Ward 1 are invited, and are invited to ask questions and make comments and anything else that's on their hearts. I've promised that I will answer questions and that the mayor will answer the hard ones. So do come out on April 23 at the Parkview Centre from 2 to 4.
Thank you, Counsel Reema. Are there any other announcements around the table? Counsel Kangal.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nettle. Hoping many are aware and hopefully in attendance at the Sadlin Centre on Friday evening as Germany plays Switzerland in the Women's World Championship Hockey pre-game, and then following that, there'll be lots of activity in the City of Brampton as the championships formally take off. So you can, I believe, still get your tickets and make inquiries, but thanks to all those coming out and supporting women's hockey.
Thank you, Counsel Kangal. Any other announcements around the table? Counsel Hamilton.
I just want to acknowledge the efforts of the Barry Royals basketball U10 girls team. They are the provincial champions. They brought home the gold medal. I think this was either the first or perhaps second time in history of the Barry Royals, so a significant achievement, and I just wanted to give them a special shout-out.
Thank you, Counsel Hamilton. Are there any other announcements around the table? Okay, seeing none, I did want to actually also indicate before I got into the announcements that, to those celebrating Ramadan and those celebrating Anuru in the community, we certainly, on behalf of council and on behalf of the city, we want to wish you the best through these celebrations, through this time. And we'll move into the announcements. I would like to proclaim the month of April as Dig Safe Month and Be a Donor Month. The Recreation and Culture Department has a full calendar of events and programming for the month of April. Highlights include Playoff Hockey Month at all community centres, the Ontario Hockey Federation Championships, April 21 and 22, and the Harlem Globetrotters' return to Sadlin Arena, April 10. For a detailed list, go to barry.ca/recreationprograms. The City of Barry is creating a new comprehensive zoning bylaw which is designed to implement the vision and policies of Barry's adopted official plan that is currently awaiting approval by the province. Visit buildingbarry.ca/zoning to review the first draft document, share your input, and learn more. The deadline for feedback is April 28. Spring has arrived, it's time to get outside and help clean up your community. Registration is now open for the City of Barry's Spring Into Clean Events, which take place April 21 to 23. Register online via barry.ca/springintoclean by April 12, 2023. The City of Barry will be participating in the 2023 City Nature Challenge from April 28 to May 1. This will be the city's first year participating in this international event, motivating people around the world to find and document wildlife in their communities. Community involvement is encouraged for this free program, and a kickoff activity is scheduled for April 28 at Sunnydale Park. For more information, visit citynaturechallenge.org. The City of Barry invites eligible local organizations to apply for the 2023 Recreation and Sport Community Grant that provides funding to enhance access to recreation and sports opportunities in Barry. The application deadline is March 31, and grants will be awarded no later than April 21. For more information, visit barry.ca/communitygrant. The next affordability committee and general committee will be held on April 5. Bylaws, please. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Reema, leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, third, and finally passed, Bill 025, 026, 027, 028, 029, 030, 031, and 032.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counsel Reema, the leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 025, 026, 027, 028, 029, 030, 031, and 032. Are there any questions or comments regarding the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Reema, that leave be granted to introduce this bill, this bill, and this will be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed, Bill 033.
Who's this bill person you're talking about all the time? It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counsel Reema, that confirmation bylaw, the leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill will be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 033. Are there any questions or comments around the table? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. We're going to begin with the confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the city council meeting held on March 8, 2023 have been circulated. Are there any corrections for members of council? Seeing none, the minutes are adopted as printed and circulated. Awards and recognition. We are going to proceed with 2022 Heritage Barry Awards. I now call upon Counsel Reema, Chair of the Heritage Barry Committee, to provide the presentation concerning the recipients of the 2022 Heritage Barry Awards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just go to the podium. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it gives me a great deal of pleasure tonight to introduce the heritage awards for this year. And before I do that, I just wanted to recognize the members, some of the members of the Heritage Committee that are here tonight, so I would ask... So I would ask them to give a little wave so that we know who you are. And we thank, I thank you as Chair. I very much appreciate that they put up with me, and I think they do terrific work. And I also wanted to acknowledge that last term Counselor Harris was with me on the committee, and this term Counselor Congal has joined me. And I think that we're having a good time and working very hard on the city's behalf. I'm going to just do a couple of slides on what the committee is all about, and then we'll introduce the winners for this year. Heritage Barry is an advisory committee to city council, and it is mandated, city council must have a heritage committee, and it's mandated under the Heritage Act. And Heritage Barry's mandate is to protect and encourage the preservation of the city of Barry's heritage, to educate council members, and to raise public awareness around cultural heritage preservation. We also work hard to advance heritage initiatives and to prepare and maintain a list of properties worth conserving. And we keep up to date on heritage conservation legislation, and we take action items from the Cultural Heritage Strategy and the Historic Neighbourhood Strategy as well. These awards that we're celebrating, oh, I missed one. Okay. The importance of heritage in Barry is, you know, if you don't know where you came from, you don't know who you are. And I think that sums up heritage very much. And I think the other really important part of heritage is that it helps to revitalise our downtown, and it serves to attract visitors, tourists, and businesses to our community. The things that we have done in the past, and this you will recognise as a very busy committee, we have 19 designated structures in the city. We have 54 of them, 54 are listed. We've been working hard on providing heritage plaques to the listed and to the designated buildings. We've been involved in the utility box wraps. They get graffitied on, and when we put wraps on them, they don't. And so we've been working, putting appropriate historic pictures on those wraps. You've also probably seen poppies on street signs. Those are all streets that are named after war veterans. And around Remembrance Day, you will see the flags up in the downtown area and in the waterfront. Those are also a product of the committee's work. We also do a lot of public engagement in terms of telling people about heritage and what we do at the farmer's market, celebrate Barry, Culture Days, or Doors Open on Dunlap Street and other places as well. Our focus for this coming year is first of all dealing with Bill 23, which is going to have some significant impact on heritage. We're also working on new heritage walking guides so that you can have a booklet in your hand and go for a walk through a neighbourhood and understand the heritage. We're also digitising the municipal heritage register, and we're always looking for new ways to innovate around promoting heritage in Barry. And we attend a lot of public events as well. Our heritage awards this year, there are five of them in total, and I'm going to ask Counselor Harris to come up and award the very first one at 72 Burton. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Counselor Reema. It is my distinct pleasure to provide the award for 72 Burton Avenue. This award is presented to Jim and Brenda Hodgins, owners of 72 Burton Street, to recognise the building for its cultural heritage value. The home was built in 1898, 1898, and is one of the original railway homes in Barry. It is a beautiful example of Victorian in the city that has been well-maintained and a continual reminder of the Allendale's history. Jim and Brenda purchased the property during COVID and have been renovating it to maintain its, and preserve its historic charm. Thank you, Jim and Brenda. Aren't you here tonight?
It's a privilege to receive this award, and I'd like to help to thank, on behalf of Brenda and myself, the Heritage Committee. We, it's kind of interesting, we're back in Allendale. Brenda and I both taught at Innesdale Secondary School. I don't think I taught you, though.
You're probably better for it.
But I don't think so. But anyway, we were there for 25 years, and now we're back in the place where we taught all of these students. And it's kind of sobering when we meet people that have in fact retired as well from teaching and other professions. It makes you feel old. But we love Barry, been here since 1976, and it's indeed a privilege to be here tonight. So I'd like to thank everybody in this room for their hard work, and we just love this house.
That's beautiful. Thank you. Okay. The next two awards are located in Ward 2, and I'm going to ask Counselor Nixon to do the awards. The first one is for 87 Owen Street.
No, that's not. There. Thank you, Counselor Reema. This award is presented to Tim and Lucy Sutton, owners of 87 Owen Street, to recognise the newly restored building for its cultural heritage value. The home was originally built in 1882 by prominent carpenter and architect Thomas Kennedy. Examples of Mr. Kennedy's work include the Sanders Block and the Bothwell Block in town, as well as numerous other Ontario landmarks. The home was built for himself and his wife in an American style and was affectionately referred to as the Lilac Villa. In 2017, the building succumbed to a devastating fire. However, Tim and Lucy have worked tirelessly and have restored it back to its original beauty. I'd like to congratulate Tim and Lucy if you wanted to come down and accept this. It'd be my honour.
The place brings me to tears. The villa.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's been almost five years. We cried when we found out that we got an award for this. Hey, it's worth it.
I hope so. Took a lot of money. This isn't a renovation, it's a replication, which doubles, sometimes triples the price. We look at the architect, we look at the downtown city of Barry. My grandfather had the AMP store, went and collected rent there. A lot of history in my family in the city of Barry. So we have to sort of preserve the past, but we have to move through in the future. I'm pleased with the development going on downtown, the high-rise densification, demolition of old buildings. That should have been one of them, but. Anyway, moving forward, we're going to finish the building off in the back. We're going to move into it and retire. So I would like to thank City of Barry Building Department, in particular Darren Donnelly. He's the guy who said we should put our name in for this thing. So we did, and here we are.
Glad you did.
The other person that we have to thank, looking back into the history, is Thomas Kennedy. We also have to thank my architect.
Robert Mitchell.
Robert Mitchell. We have to thank Westron Mechanical, Peter Duben Gordon, and Larry Isis. They were significant suppliers for the artwork and stuff on the building. We have to thank the wall workers. They're the money gods, electricians. So we have to thank those people. And all these new councillors here, I don't recognise hardly anybody. We worked for the city for close to, I know you from someplace. But anyways, everything is changing. But change is good, but to preserve our past is important, too. So moving forward, I want to finish, and I want to thank all you councillors and go for the good direction and intensify the downtown, and that will help clean up all the problems that we have.
Beautiful, huh?
So I've worn out a number of mayors, you know. I gotta see your paycheck soon. Your signature, Al.
Okay, the next building is in the commercial category, and it's 125-127 Dunlop Street East. You may recall that last week at General Committee, we agreed to designate this property as a historic, as a historic building, and we're in the process of doing that. So.
Counselor Nixon?
Thank you again. My pleasure to present this award to Sandra Orr, owner of 125-127 Dunlop Street East, to recognise the building for its cultural heritage value. This commercial building was built by early Barry businessman Henry Boyes between 1875 and 1876, and forms part of the Boys Block in the downtown core. While the block was designed by Lone &amp; Strong, each one of the buildings was purchased from Boys prior to completion. This allowed each new owner to choose the finishes of their building and resulted in each building in the block being unique. The building features decorative brickwork above the second-story windows and original stained glass. The property has been evaluated for cultural heritage value and interest, and is currently in the process of being designated as a heritage property under the Ontario Heritage Act. And I'd like to present to Sandra Orr. Sandra, are you here tonight?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Joe is the one who keeps it looking beautiful.
Was there anything you'd like to say?
I'm just really happy that designating it will help preserve another old building in Barry because we've lost two men, and I'm delighted.
Mr. Mayor, tonight we also have two individuals that we want to recognise. Unfortunately, for both of them, it is posthumously, and I would like to call the family of Christine Manuel up here to receive this award. On behalf of Heritage Barry and the city of Barry, I'd like to give you this in memory of your mother. Christine was very much a passionate person about heritage. She'd been involved in heritage for a long time. I first met her on the Heritage Strategy Committee, or the Neighbourhood Strategy Committee, and when she chaired it, I was always impressed by her "go get 'em" attitude, you know? It was like, well, why can't we do this? So I really appreciated her on a very personal basis, and she was a valuable member of the, a very knowledgeable member of Heritage Barry. And sadly, you know, she couldn't carry on with her health issues and resigned last term, but you know, your mother did have a tremendous impact here in the city of Barry, and I very much appreciate it. So, did you want to say anything?
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much, yes, thank you. The only thing I would say is my mom really enjoyed the time that she did the work on the Barry Historic Neighbourhoods Committee and on the Heritage Committee. I think she was one of those people who championed the, you know, the city of Barry and the community. She chose to move up here from Aurora in 1976, I believe it was, when Barry was much smaller, and I think she really appreciated the charm of Barry. And I think she, as she retired, I think she really wanted to make sure that that was preserved, and so she really appreciated the time that she did, and thank you very much for this. She would have appreciated it.
And the second person that we want to honour tonight is Al McNair, and I would ask Catherine Mercer to come and accept this award on his behalf. And, I don't want to stand in front of you. So Catherine, I know that your loss is also the city's loss, and Al was taken from us far too soon, and at the same time, he leaves a significant legacy for us all to follow in his footsteps. So on behalf of the Heritage Barry and on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this award on his behalf. And on a personal note, you'll know that Al, most of you would know him because he's appeared before this council a number of times, was a city planner, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, for me, he lived in Ward 1. And so I regularly got free planning advice and free environmental advice from Al, and always much appreciated. And one of the things that Al was very instrumental in was on the, right beside the Hip Development Site, it's on sort of where Simcoe Street is going to go, you'll see a chimney. And the protection of that structure was in large part due to Al, because that chimney is an important habitat for chimney swifts. And so everything else got turned down around it. And so everything else got torn off, turned down around it, but that chimney still stands today so that the birds have a place to be in. So we owe Al a big thank you, and thank you very much for sharing him with us, Catherine.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience with his phone calls.
Yes. That, Mr. Mayor, brings me to the end of the awards. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Counselor. And thank you to each of the award recipients, certainly for the work that was done by those two we've just honored, but also those who we've honored with awards tonight on the work that's been done on their individual properties. It's such an important piece of Barry. We have a great history here, we have a great heritage here, and thank you for continuing to contribute towards it, because if we don't, it'll be lost over time. And so what you're doing is preserving it, so thank you so much. Members of council, with your indulgence, I'd like to rearrange some of the, some of the meeting agenda tonight and actually proceed with the presentations, or presentation. Before we do, there's, I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Thompson to put a motion on the floor with regards to Dr. Mike Moffett, who is unable to join us this evening due to a change of plans, so Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Corser, that the presentation of Dr. Mike Moffett concerning the housing market in Ontario be deferred to a further, a future
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Corser, that the presentation by Dr. Mike Moffett concerning the housing market in Ontario be deferred to a future city council meeting. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it's approved. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? It's moved by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Har-
That was the update from the city council meeting. Keep tuning in for more news. Thank you.